I am Councilmember Nueva Camina. I'm calling this meeting to order. This is the Parks and Environmental Sustainability Committee, held on Tuesday, March 26th, commencing at 4:34 PM. Councilmembers in attendance are Councilmember Salah Hudin, Councilmember Stewart. Joining us online, Councilmember Anderson, Council President Kritzler, and Councilmember Fields, and Vice President Forsyth are not in attendance today. We have five items on the agenda, and the first one is Energy Smart Eastside Program Update, and Jenny Liebeck is here with an update for us.
Great. Good afternoon, Council. I am Jenny Liebeck, Sustainability Program Manager here at the city. And with me today is Sarah Phillips. So Sarah is the Energy Smart Eastside Program Manager. And Sarah actually works on behalf of the five eastside cities to implement and grow our residential home electrification program. She is technically an employee of the city of Bellevue, but similar to the Arch model, we basically fund, or Redmond funds a portion of Sarah's salary. So I have given a few kind of overview updates over the past two years, basically, on the Energy Smart Eastside Program. But today, we've got Sarah here just to go a little bit deeper into the 2023 accomplishments, and then where we're headed into in 2024 and beyond. So I'm going to hand it over to Sarah, and then I'll have some slides, too, that we'll show throughout.
All right. Thank you so much for having me here at your beautiful city hall today. It's really a treat to be able to talk with you about this. It's a topic I'm super passionate about. But also, this is a particularly engaged community as it relates to climate action, and you are a particularly engaged council, and that makes it especially fun. So really, we'll give you an overview of a few things. One, how Energy Smart Eastside ties to your city's climate objectives, kind of why are we doing this? We'll talk to you a little bit about the urgency of making progress on residential electrification, particularly over the next four or five years, and how that ladders all the way to 2050. So why are the next four or five years so critical to making 2050 climate objectives a reality? And we'll talk a little bit about how the program is structured. We'd love to get questions from you, and we can collaborate a little bit with you on what that could look like as we start to scale the program. Were you going to pull up the slides? Awesome. Okay, we're going to start with, why are we investing in Energy Smart Eastside? So as most of you saw, but for anybody who's listening and wants to understand quite briefly, Energy Smart Eastside is a home electrification program, and its current focus is on encouraging residents through incentives, rebates, and assistance to buy heat pumps, and particularly to displace gas furnaces with heat pumps. And that's kind of where the program is starting. And one of the reasons we're doing that is because we're looking at, how do we get to our 2050 emissions goals of being carbon neutral? The graph that's on the slide relates to current snapshot of emissions by sector in Redmond. This is from your latest greenhouse gas inventory, and you can see that residential accounts for almost a quarter of your total emissions. And 73% of single-family homes are currently heated with gas furnaces. Most of those will also have a gas water heater as well. And when you think about like the path from getting here to carbon neutral, some of that path, as it relates to electric appliances, is going to happen for you because of the regulations that Washington State has happened, and because of the obligations Puget Sound Energy will have to clean its grid. And I think you're all pretty familiar with that legislation. So one of the major gaps that really can use the help of municipal programs is how do we help residents with electrifying their homes? And, you know, really taking that step. If I go to the next slide. And it is, if you think of all the different things that burn gas in the home, whether it's your stove, a fireplace you might have, a water heater, or your furnace, furnaces have the most, the largest potential benefit for reducing emissions. This graph tries to kind of paint that picture, and really what it's saying is if you were to replace a furnace today, over its lifetime, what would the emission savings be? And it's really significant. The furnace by itself, being replaced with a heat pump, is 62 tons of CO2, which is really equivalent to driving a car 160,000 miles. So I think a lot of people think about, oh, I know that I need to make my next automobile purchase an electric car, and they might not be thinking so much about the furnace that's in their basement, but it has just as big an impact. And the reason that scales so much over time is it takes into account how the grid is getting cleaner as well. So over time, that impact grows. And if you were to also replace a water heater, that scales up to 86 tons of CO2. So those are like the two biggest areas within the home that can really provide that emission savings. And the other benefit, this is like where it's like a climate two-for-one, where I get really excited about these things, is the other benefit is in climate resiliency, right? Heat pumps, as I know you are all aware, not only provide heating, and the tech now, they work great in cold climates, but they're providing air conditioning. And particularly if you implement a ducted heat pump, which tends to be the primary choice when people are retrofitting their homes, you're also getting the benefit of air filtration. So as we start to have more extreme heat days and summer wildfire events, getting those things into homes, particularly homes with like vulnerable seniors, is super important. So this graph kind of helps try to understand the urgency and the need. If you think about the life cycle of a furnace, it's good for about 18 to 20 years typically, which means that we need to start changing behavior on what people replace furnaces that are aging out now, and really get them to start thinking about replacing that with a heat pump. The graph kind of shows, if you were to look at a business-as-usual growth plan, so you know, more people are buying them. It is increasing as an overall percentage of residential HVAC sales. But if you were just to kind of project that out on a linear fashion, it's kind of a very, very slow-studied growth. What we need to have happen is by 2032, nearly 100% of residential HVAC sales need to scale to now be a heat pump. So that is a massive change in behavior between now and 2032. And there's some barriers that homeowners are facing as they kind of think about making this investment. Number one, you know, the primary time, unless it's, you know, coming up on summer and they're thinking about getting air conditioning, the primary time when people choose to put in new heating is when their old furnace breaks, and that's really when you need to have the conversation about, uh-oh, this is an unplanned expense, my furnace is broken, it's winter, and I need a replacement. And a gas furnace, if you were to even put in a really efficient gas furnace, it's about a $9,000 to $12,000 investment, still stings when you're not expecting it. If you were to contemplate a heat pump, that's going to go from a $20,000 to $30,000 investment. That's a hard conversation to have when it's an unplanned expense. And if you think about like kind of that cost stack and how it relates, that blue bar is saying, okay, here's the equivalent price to put in a gas furnace. You get a little bit of help from tax credits, you get a little bit of help from utility rebates, and then there's still a real unfunded gap. How do we help close that gap and help make it accessible and an accessible choice and an easy choice to make, particularly when you're layering in the additional benefits of air conditioning and air filtration? You know, kind of part two of that cost equation, we get asked a lot, is what's the ROI? So if I put this in, I'm going to save money on my energy bill. Will those bill savings result in enough to kind of pay for that additional investment? And what's really hard, especially when we're trying to incentivize folks to move from gas to electricity, is the low-depressed cost of natural gas. Now, the legislation that just passed, where we're going to start to see a combination of electric and gas prices, may actually start to change this landscape. But if you look at where we're at today, if you were to purchase a heat pump and put it in, particularly if you do that without additional weatherization, it's going to cost roughly the same amount in terms of an energy bill. That's not true if you were upgrading from an inefficient electric furnace or electric resistance heat. Those folks see a dramatic savings in their energy bills. But when you're talking about homeowners against 73% of the single-family homes in Redmond's making this change, they're not really going to get that cost savings back necessarily in their energy bills. And so a lot of the way that this program is designed today is to think about this laddering up to the demographics of the city of Redmond, and how can we have program tracks that really help meet everybody where they're at, so we have an equitable transition? We could absolutely focus on higher income and try to get those folks over the line, and then you're not getting the benefits, particularly those resiliency benefits, out to the community in proportion to the population. So the way that the program is designed is, we kind of take a look at the target heat pumps that we want to try to influence getting installed, and we say, okay, how can we assist perhaps 20% of our target and put them into our low-income track? So for example, we pay for 100% of the cost of a heat pump installation for folks that qualify and are at 80% or lower of area median income. How do we make sure we have incentives that can help bridge that gap we were talking about for middle-income residents? And then even for the higher-income residents, we find that they really struggle with all of the normal things about this purchase process, which are not easy. How do I get connected with a quality contractor? How do I understand and kind of navigate what this quote is saying? Why are these quotes saying something different? I don't know which one to choose. How do I apply the rebates that are accessible to me? How do I do financing? There's a lot of questions. And so how do we educate the community, get them excited about this, and connect them resources so they can navigate this effectively? As we kind of think about where we are at with 2024, Redmond made an investment of $456,000 for years 2023 and 2024, which was really what I think of as kind of the bootstrap of this program. We really got it off the ground, and it launched in 2022, but we got it off the ground in a significant way last year. I joined as the first staff person on September 1st of last year. And that investment, coupled with the investment that the other partner cities for the Eastside Climate Partnership put together, was able to bring in an additional $2.5 million of grant funding. The majority of that grant funding is directly going to low- and middle-income residents. So we're kind of taking seed money from the cities and able to go after state and federal money. That's been really effective to try and meet the need. For 2024, we're looking forward to implementing up to 180 heat pumps in Redmond, half of those in low- and middle-income residents. And then we're looking at strategies to be able to scale that 2X in 2025 and 3X in 2026, again, going back to the urgency that we need to really provide. We believe we could provide a catalyst in the marketplace between now and 2032 to help really drive that adoption of heat pumps and get to the point where we're in great position for most homes to have been completely retrofitted by 2050. So hopefully, all of that timing made sense as I kind of walked through it. Our program design today, we talked a little bit about, we have incentives, we have for middle income, we have 100% cost coverage for low income, which we execute with our partner HopeLink. And then we have outreach education and one-on-one coaching for all residents. As we look at kind of improvements to the program over the next year, we're really looking at, how do we make those incentives easier to use? So looking at potential options to broaden our distribution of those incentives, which we think could be really impactful to getting them in people's hands. How do we make it easier to connect folks with financing? Increasing our partnership with the HVAC contractor community, which is absolutely critical to having the conversation about replacing a furnace with a heat pump, if that doesn't already come up, and really making sure that they feel equipped to have that conversation, and we're supporting them in that. And then making it easier for residents to connect with help. We just soft-launched a one-on-one energy advisory service, for example, and it was so interesting, we did not promote it. We put it in the footer of our website. We're making ourselves available six hours a week to residents in any of the five cities that have questions, and we were immediately booked, which was just amazing. And so it really showed that that's a service that residents find valuable. So that's a little bit of an update. I'm going to sort of pause there and would welcome any questions.
Council, do we have any questions? Concerns, comments? Councilmember Salah Hudin?
Yeah, thank you so much for the level of depth that you went into. I really appreciated the presentation and reading through the program highlights. You mentioned '23 as a bootstrap year, and it was 205 heat pump installations there. First, really quick question, do you know how many of those were in Redmond?
I think it was around 40.
Forty, okay. And then, so we're planning on jumping up to 180, I believe you mentioned. What's the plan to sort of get out of that bootstrap phase to really, you know, reach as many community members as possible?
There's a few things. Number one, we're in the process of hiring a marketing organization, so we just went through the RFP, selected them, should have them contracted by next month. I think that's going to really help us reach so many more people than we were. Number two, in 2025, '26, we plan to hire a firm to actually build out what we're kind of calling the concierge service, so that one-on-one support, and being able to staff it much more than six hours a week, which I think will be really useful. Number three, it's, I think, this is not a new funding, it's really almost more, think of it like business development, it's finding abilities to make the right partnerships, where we get the rebates in the hands of people in a logical place in their buying journey. We have a rebate program in place right now that is okay, but I think we're missing people. And we have some really fun ideas on business development, how we can kind of integrate more deeply there. So those are some number, you know, some really concrete things that we're doing. Some others, as it relates to like the number of low-income installs we can do, will really directly be tied to city funding, of course, for 2025, '26, and the associated grant pull-through that we think we can get. We did put in for a $5.5 million grant through the HERE program, it's a Department of Commerce program, and we expect to hear back in April what that award amount will be. We don't, we expect to get an award, we don't know if we'll get the full ask. And then that will be essentially apportioned out relatively proportionally based on city size. Most of that grant will go into low-income installations. There's still a lot of opportunity, both in federal and state grants, for us to pursue, which is really exciting. So a lot of it is making sure that we're really jumping on those opportunities.
Council President Kritzler?
Thank you so much for being here today, and apologies, I'm a little under the weather. I'd be there with you in person. I was curious, in terms of the higher-income residents that were more influencing in their purchasing decision, do you have a count on how many residents have decided to make those purchases in the past year, since I think you had given us more numbers on which ones we had subsidized that had been purchased?
So the 205 total installations that we're talking about from last year, that includes high-income purchases, to the extent that we can track them through utilization of the manufacturer rebate that we've made available. That means that they purchased a Mitsubishi heat pump and that the contractor actually entered it into the distributor portal, we can count that as a complete win. We think we've influenced more than that in reality. One of the things that we're doing is kind of a foundational sort of data integrity component is figuring out how we can consolidate permit data from all five cities, so that we can actually track changes in the overall dynamic of implementing heat pumps. So we're pulling data right now related to that.
Great, thank you. And one, just one other quick question in terms of the scope. It sounds like, but I'm not sure, are you working with a lot of the distributors, so on those who are like the HVAC companies that sell these? Because I know when I actually got a heat pump, that multiple told me, you know, tried to sell me on why I should actually just replace with a gas furnace. And so it's kind of, you know, the hearts and minds, I think, of some of those distributors, too, that I'm wondering about if there's a way to incentivize them to want to push more of heat pumps.
Yeah, what a fantastic question, Councilmember Kritzler. Thank you for asking that. Our program partners with Gensco, they're one of the largest distributors of residential HVAC equipment in Western Washington. Gensco has, and then we, within Gensco, we work with the Mitsubishi diamond dealer network, and that's who we have on our website, like if you're going to go to installers. It's those diamond dealers who have gone through our training, and part of that is that they're signing on, you know, they can work with us and really be the recipient of leads, which is really important. But they're also then going to work with residents in a proactive way to really think through heat pumps as being a great option, and to be knowledgeable about applying rebates, et cetera. The problem that you just talked about is a very real one. If you were just to call three HVAC contractors, they could easily get, and say you want a heat pump, even if you say, start with the premise, I would like a heat pump, you might get proposals, for example, with a heat pump paired with a gas furnace, which is not really exactly what we're hoping people will choose. So one of the ways I'm doing it is sort of kind of a multi-pronged approach to this. Number one is strengthening the partnership with the HVAC contractors that we are already in network with. I've been working with them to put together sales enablement collateral for their team, for example, and I've been working with the owners. Sometimes the owners are completely on board. These are small, family-run businesses, but their sales teams are going to sell what they know. And so it's really helping them kind of come up with that sales collateral and incentivizing them. And we really incentivize them primarily through leads. Our last campaign that we ran drove 150 leads to area contractors, so that's meaningful, and so they like to work with us from that perspective. The second component is looking at potentially expanding our distribution, and that's kind of some of the business development work that I was talking about. But it is a, it's a key, it's a key challenge.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much for the update and the chance to meet you and hear more about the work that you're doing. I'm, of course, very concerned about the most recent question and the conversation on the swimming upstream against the fact that folks can still choose and do choose to choose, to choose gas, to heat their homes with gas. I am very concerned about that. I wanted to ask about the 2024 priorities. It was mentioned in the materials that nine additional low-income homes would receive 100% subsidy for new heat pumps, but that that money was tied to the Climate Commitment Act. And I wanted to just check in, how are you planning and sort of contingency planning into the next year, given where we might go with the Climate Commitment Act?
Great question. So we have been told by Puget Sound Energy that they will be naming Energy Smart Eastside in their next UTC filing as a partner to deliver $850,000 in Climate Commitment Act funding, specifically to get heat pumps into low-income homes. Puget Sound Energy is also concerned about that, so our strategy is to spend it fast. And we don't think we'll have any problem. We have capacity through our partnership with HopeLink and also with the contractors on our qualified roster, and we also have a deep enough waitlist that, at this point, for that specific line item of funding, we believe we'll be able to spend that in 2024, and it won't be subject to any repeal situation. Now, broadly, as we think about our plans to aggressively continue to go after grant funding, a repeal of the CCA would, of course, impact that.
Thank you.
Ms. Phillips, thank you very much for all of your time and all of the passion that you've put into this. I appreciate it. And Ms. Liebeck, just confirming that today is informational only?
Correct.
Wonderful. We're going to move on to our second item on the agenda, which is the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan update. Ms. Liebeck is going to be staying on with us. Council, I'm going to request, and the topic of time, since we are running behind, we've got four other items to make sure that we keep our questions short and succinct. If we need to, we can always email them on.
Perfect. Yeah, and I will be very quick for this item. So again, Attachment A includes some of the top highlights from the past month, but I did just want to flag one item in particular, which was, Council had requested that we include quarterly data on the impact of the public charging fee that the city imposed. This would have been last July. And so as we look, we've reported on this once before, and what, in general, what we are seeing is that the fee, and I could just back up, actually, for our new council members, basically, we imposed a fee that was no penalty for staying above a posted three-hour time limit, but just that they, that we would, again, impose a fee so we could help reduce the dwell time, because we had a lot of folks staying beyond the posted three-hour limit, and then we were getting a lot of complaints. So what we're actually seeing is that we are still getting folks who are staying a good, for that full three hours is our average dwell time. And we're continuing about the same rate of sessions that exceed that three-hour limit, so around 27%, 28% compared, it's basically on par with our baseline. But we are seeing the total number of charging sessions has decreased, which has basically made the charging stations more available. So I think it's something for us to continue to monitor, and we can all come back to Council to see if this is something we would like to shift, or if we're content with how kind of these trends are continuing. So it's just something that I wanted to call out in particular for Council, since you had requested those quarterly updates on usage and the impact of the fee. So I'll leave it at that, unless there are other questions.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much for coming back with this, and it was fascinating to see what we're seeing. Man, sorry, it's been a long day. I want to check in quickly, I'm not sad about the revenue generated as a result of the fees, a little over $6,000. Can you remind us what we were aiming to produce as a result of the fee?
Yeah, so the fee basically is just recovering the costs of the electricity to, and then our contract with ChargePoint, because the networked fees to offer that service, there's obviously a cost associated with that. So it's really basically just reimbursing costs, and that goes right back to our Parks Department, who pays those bills.
And what was the estimate that we thought it would produce in terms of dollars?
That's a good question. I'll have to follow up with you on that. I know that was in our early materials, so I can look back.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Salah Hudin?
Thank you. Also, along the same lines, do we have any data on downtimes of the EV charging stations? And if so, I mean, if you don't have it right now, just following up for that.
Perfect, yeah, I can include both those items in a follow-up.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, Ms. Liebeck, thank you very much for the update. Moving on to our third topic for today's meeting is the approval of Southeast Redmond Park Master Plan. And here with us, we have Director Lorraine Hamilton and Cameron Zapata.
Good af, oh, sorry, excuse me. Good afternoon, City Council. I am Director Lorraine Hamilton, Parks and Recreation, and I'm joined today by our senior park planner, Cameron Zapata. The item in front of us today is the Southeast Redmond Master Plan, and I'm going to hand it off to Cameron as we look to get this adopted by Council.
Good afternoon. So yeah, Southeast Redmond Park, bringing this forward to request it to be, to have it be placed on the April 2nd consent agenda for approval. Southeast Redmond Park is a 3.2-acre park located at the northeast corner of 188th and Northeast 68th Street, so about a half-mile south of Costco. It's currently grassy, relatively flat park without any built-out park amenities, and so it's essentially a blank slate. The city has hired the consultant Burger Partnership to help us develop a master plan for Southeast Redmond Park. And the master plan is used as a foundational roadmap for the subsequent phases for development, and that would include design permitting and construction. It outlines the envisioned amenities for the park, and it tells the story of how we got there. Although the location of the amenities proposed are general, they'll be further refined during the design and permitting. And as part of this master plan process, three community meetings were held, and feedback from that first initial meeting that was held on September 13th of 2023, and that was held at the park site, it helped to shape the development of three distinct park concepts. These concepts were then presented to the community at its second community meeting on October 18th, and an online questionnaire was also provided. And that feedback resulted in a consensus around one particular concept, and the input from the three concepts were also used to integrate specific elements from each concept to develop the preferred plan. The preferred plan was then presented to the community at its January 31st meeting and also posted to its Let's Connect site, where an additional online questionnaire was posted. And the preferred plan was then further refined based on that feedback. Staff did receive some concerns over parking availability and potential noise impacts over the sports courts. And as a result of that feedback during the design and permitting phases... And as a result of that feedback, during the design and permitting phases, a parking study will be initiated to assess if any additional onsite parking would be necessitated, and then a noise study will also be conducted to determine the optimal location for the sports courts and evaluate the need for any noise mitigation. And that's outlined on page 18 of the master plan. And the master plan was brought to the Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission on March 7th, and the commission has recommended an approval by city council. And again, at this time, staff is requesting that the Southeast Redmond Park Master Plan be put on the consent agenda for April 2nd for the city council's approval of the master plan. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much, Ms. Zapata. Great to see you again, and always excited to talk about this project. As always, I have so much gratitude for the approach and engagement of the neighbors that you all took during this process. One of my favorite nights ever was on council, was being involved in the early community meetings. So, thank you so much on that. We saw this, and as you said, in addition, since we saw it last, is the inclusion of the parking study and the noise study as it goes through the permitting process. And later on in the process, this is just such the early stages. What else, if any, has changed since council saw it last?
The clarity of the neighborhood icon, that it is intended to pull the character of that neighborhood together.
And that that item would actually be a public art call. So, as opposed to asking our master planning kind of design team to identify what that would look like, but that we would actually put out an art call during that process and then engage the neighborhood on what they want that to look like, as opposed to us telling them what the neighborhood of their, character of their neighborhood is, asking them to be a part of that conversation. We did also identify that there is kind of a restroom alcove, as we kind of discussed around perhaps having temporary restrooms there, particularly in our busiest season. The sport courts at one point was identified specifically as a pickleball court, but our goal at our neighborhood parks is to create as much flexibility as possible. And so, calling it a pickleball court doesn't actually create that flexibility. It creates a bit of a narrow use. We want to ensure that it's accessible by tennis or pickleball, and how can we make that fully accessible? And then I think the noise and parking were kind of the biggest takeaways as we've gone through this process. Based on our use of the park for community engagement and how many people we had there and how much parking still remained, staff feel relatively confident that this park will be okay. And yet, we really do respect the concern of the community and want to make sure that they feel confident in whatever park goes into their neighborhood as well. So, that will be something we spend a good amount of time on.
I really appreciate the balancing of the polarity there. Director Hamilton, thank you so much. And I do think for any of the neighbors who may be watching, and it's great, we will have the parking study included. This is an area that we actually, as a city, have fairly recent experience with, given the West Side Park and the initial thoughts around that too, for parking and things like that. So, it sounds like we're going to do our due diligence, make sure it's taken care of, but I do appreciate the approach there. And I very much look forward to having this on consent at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Salah Houdin?
Yeah, thank you so much. This is really exciting for the Southeast Redmond community and Redmond at large. I believe, looking at the public meeting calendar, the last time that, you know, the community saw, before the most recent meeting, was public meeting number two, and that's in our appendix, I believe. Is there data from public meeting number three in terms of survey responses or anything from community feedback besides parking, that icon and the noise?
Those are mainly the concerns. I did notice that the third results from that questionnaire weren't included in, in the master plan, so we'll get that in there.
Okay, great. Now, that would be good to see, no concerns, but just interested in hearing what the community has to say.
Agreed, and it's good for us to have it as we look back on that master plan in the future to make sure that we've captured that. So, thank you. We'll get that included before it moves forward.
Do we have any other questions or comments from council? Well, seeing none, I'm very much looking forward to this park, and I appreciate the amount of intentionality that's gone in, in both bringing in the community as well as the very thoughtful design, even including for comparison, size comparisons inside of the master plan. So, it's a little bit easier for us to imagine, right? Like, this is the lawn at Downtown Park, so then, when we're taking a look at the size of garden plots and that, then we can have a better idea of that. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing that on consent for April 2nd. Moving on to agenda item number four is Facilities Condition Assessment Update.
Director Hamilton, again, I'm joined today by our facilities manager, Quinn Kuhnhausen, and he's bringing forward an item that will be coming to study session with city council on April 23rd. And so, this should just be a brief touch, and we would love to also, if there's any questions you would like to see answered in that study session, this would be really helpful for us as we prepare.
Thank you, Lorraine. Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm Quinn Kuhnhausen, Facilities Manager, and I'm here today to just provide an update on the status of the Facilities Condition Assessment. MANG, our consultant on the project, recently completed the assessment of our buildings, and we're working with them on a summary and a final draft. The sustainability portion of this condition assessment is being conducted over the next few months, and a separate update will be scheduled for that. So, this one will not be that update. MANG and city staff will present the findings of this condition assessment at the April 23rd study session, if you guys move this on. So, that's the only update we have, is, you know, we've seen the rough draft, but we're looking forward to putting that summary together and the findings with MANG.
And just a reminder that the portion that Jenny Liebeck brought prior will kind of take its own track after this, around the sustainability elements of the plan. So, if you guys have any questions, either that we can quickly answer today or that you'd like us to answer in the study session on the 23rd, we would be more than happy to take those to our consultant and make sure we answer them.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. Looking forward to seeing this come back, and it's actually really great to meet you, and we enjoy your, the facilities that you manage every day, every week here at Redmond, so it's really awesome to meet you. So, thanks for joining us.
Yeah.
Look forward to the study session. I have a couple of just things to make sure that are included in the conversation. For me personally, I would like to hear the relationship between the planning for the fleet and the fleet study. I heard, I read it, you know, in the materials, electrification and whatnot, so making sure that we have a connection to that. Additionally, something that's been really important to this council over the past several years is understanding not just the current condition of our buildings, but the maintenance plan, so that we can budget accordingly and feel confident that we have that moving forward. So, if we could just return to that conversation, I think that would be helpful. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
If I might provide a little bit of additional context. So, our Facilities Condition Assessment, as we're going to bring it, will bring more along those lines of what you're talking about with the current. And then, we're actually going to embark on a next step, which is that planning phase that you're kind of talking about. So, we'll definitely talk about what that planning phase is going to look like, but just kind of want to let you know that it'll be more about that next step, and that will come through council as well.
Any other questions on this topic? Well, we look forward to seeing you back on the 23rd for a study session.
Thank you.
Thank you, Quinn. And staying with us...
Always.
...is Director Hamilton with our Redmond Senior and Community Center operational update.
Yes. So, as promised last month, we're just going to be with you over the next couple of months, giving brief updates about the senior and community center operations and how we're doing, as well as just give any opportunity for council to ask questions that we might not be answering. So, information regarding the Redmond Senior and Community Center and how we are operationalizing can be found at redmond.gov/rscc. That includes our operational hours, our fee structures, the kids' own information, information about how to rent the space at the new community center. And so, if you interact with anyone from our community who might be asking questions around that, redmond.gov/rscc will be able to give them a lot of information. If they're unable to find the information they need, then there will be contact information for who they can contact to get that information. The grand opening is well underway, the planning for that. We have the formal ribbon cutting on Friday afternoon, May 3rd, and then the grand opening and community-wide celebration will be on May 4th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And on that Saturday, we're going to be really showcasing what the building is going to be doing. So, we're going to be showcasing the types of programs that we might have and the types of performances that you might see. And so, it's really going to be a fun time to let people experience the building, perhaps buy their first set of punch passes or kids' own tickets for their time in our facility. And we just really hope that you all are able to join us on those dates. Formal invites will be put in your inboxes, and I believe we have holds on calendars? We will make sure the holds are currently on your calendars. I think they are, but we'll double-check that. The building will fully open to the public for regular operating hours on May 6th. Staff have been undergoing training for all of the systems, equipment, software, preparing for opening. Yesterday, I went to walk through the building, and they were learning how to use the kitchen. So, we're getting ready to open the building and to utilize it to serve our community, and staff are creating our standard operating procedures for all of our systems. Furniture and furnishings and equipment are arriving. This includes things like our fitness equipment, tables and chairs, gym equipment, a piano for the community room, and on and on. And so, we will start to see that building fill with all the things that we will use in that building, and we are really excited to show you all of that in May. The public artists are finalizing installations and scheduling final walkthroughs. One of them, Joe Thurston's piece, has already been installed, and so, we're looking forward to that. In addition, our cultural arts team is getting our rotating art displays ready to go, and so, they put out a public art call for people to be able to display their art within the community center. And so, we are very excited to showcase local artists in that space. With the opening of the Redmond Senior and Community Center in May, as well as to continue to accommodate the needs of our community and ensure accessible parking for all, there will be some changes to parking that you see particularly on that side of campus, near the parking structure. Additional information will come out about that and signage and all the communications plan, but just a heads up that there might be some changes coming. And additionally, we'll be sprucing up both the parking garage and the really, really lovely pink sign that's over by the parking garage that matched the former senior center. That's going to get a little much-needed facelift prior to the opening of the Redmond Senior and Community Center, so that it also reflects the current names of facilities that are found on campus. And so, we really look forward to welcoming you into this facility. It has been a really long time coming, and we've been working really hard. We appreciate your continued support, and we're more than, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you might have about the senior and community center.
Questions? Do we have any questions or comments on the update? Councilmember Stewart?
Sure. Very happy to be headed toward the celebration and the opening. Thank you so much. I have gotten some great feedback that the website is super easy to use, and I serve on a board of a local nonprofit who also has its own space available for rent, and they modeled the rental fee catalog and structure and even the prices after the great work of the team here at the city of Redmond. So, just wanted to give you all props for that. And great to just raise awareness for my fellow councilmembers that we're going to have just so much more additional space available for local nonprofits and residents and everyone. There's, there has been a missing amount of community space...
Yes.
...as this building has been closed, and there is relief coming with the opening of this building. So, the website's really easy to use, and I have already pointed people to it. So, thank you so much, and look forward to celebrating with your team.
I appreciate that, and I will make sure to share that with our program coordinator, who has worked really hard to create that. So, thank you for that feedback.
Any other questions for Director Hamilton?
If I might, give one other shout-out to our team. Today, summer camp registration opened within the city of Redmond, and we also launched our new smart registration software. So, if you see a recreation staff or a customer experience staff and they look a little tired, it's been a really busy day, but very successful. So, big shout-out to the recreation team. We've had a lot of registrations today, and just a lot of residents looking forward to a great summer in our system. So, yeah, and it will open for non-residents next week. So, if you have anyone needing summer camps, we've got a lot.
So, that is wonderful to hear.
Yes.
I've got two quick questions, and one is, in our area, we're experiencing staffing issues. Are we seeing any staffing issues at this point?
I would say that it's always difficult to make sure we have supplemental staff coverage, but that's, I think, pretty consistent with what we see in the area. Our supplemental staff do things like cover our front desks or do kind of part-time summer camps and things like that. I believe we've had a little bit of a tougher time this season hiring our park operations seasonals, and so, we do feel that pinch some years more than others in those seasonal supplemental-type positions. For our regular full-time positions and the positions that we've opened up in recent months, we've had a really great recruitment effort and really deep pools of applicants that have resulted in some really great hires for us. So, yeah, I think in, consistent with what other organizations are seeing, that supplemental, part-time, seasonal-type work can be a little bit harder to recruit for. So, we just keep on keeping on.
It sounds like if somebody is looking for either a summer camp or supplemental fun income, that they can come on down and...
Absolutely. We do have a lot of openings right now for various positions, especially for this facility, including kids' own attendance, fitness attendance, customer experience staff. And so, yeah, if people are looking for a really fun place to work with some great people, we've got great opportunities for that.
Great. I know that summer camp registration has already opened. I've heard from several residents around being able to reserve for events. And my apologies that I didn't check out the website and know this already, but is that live? And if not, when will that be live?
I believe it is live.
For residents, March 17?
For residents, it was open March 17th, which means it's already open for non, right? Yes, it is open.
Great, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
And thank you for the update.
Great.
Seeing no other questions or concerns, is there anything, is there anything else for the good of the order for today? Well, if not, we are adjourned.